And fine.
All right.
I have to get to one other place.
You said you did email us the.
I got it pulled up. He's he did it.
Okay.
All right. Good afternoon. This is March twentieth twenty twenty three. The time is now three oh two P M. Kevin Day. Chair of the Justice Department and Board of County Commissioners of all this meeting, the order. If you have your cell phones, please make sure they're silenced. And if you would join me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for the invocation, please. Father, we come to you and as we be here now to address business of the county, we do ask for your presence with us. We ask for your guidance. And direction and just guidance in this time. Jesus. Amen. Okay, Kelly, if we could get a real call, please.
Commissioner Day.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Flower.
Present.
And clerk to the board, Killer Camper, present.
Okay, and audience introduction.
Brayden Wilson, Director. My name is Major.
And I'm Jennifer Creed, Ag. One Two Four.
Okay, and I did not get logged in.
I'll let you know if I see anybody too.
All right, if anybody does speak. Later, please ID yourself for the record, and I would greatly appreciate that. Any amendments to the agenda?
Not for me.
Yes, sir. Okay, published comment. Is there anyone online that with their hand up? Okay, no, no one here in the room. And I don't believe you have any unfinished business. So moving to new business. First item up would be the consideration of the RFP for county attorney. And maybe it's time enough to get that. Mail to us. As it was worked on. Mr. Chair, I would move that we. Approve the request for proposal for county attorney. That's developed during the workshop today.
I'll say it.
Yes, I do have a motion on the floor to approve the RFP for county attorney. As. Developed at the workshop earlier. That will take us to discussion. Did you say you had something there?
I did just find something on the first page. Where it starts with and propose these four copies you received. And that.
Oh, yeah.
If we could change that.
Now, in my copy says that the Finance and Human Resources Department, two oh five South Sixth Street, West Cliff, Colorado. Eight one two five two until five P M. April eleven twenty twenty three. The county reserves the right to accept. The address should be. I think gone by us.
I think we spoke about that earlier. We didn't quite get it typed up there.
He got it in part for the attorney services.
We'd have to have an intergovernmental agreement. Get our.
Was the date. Included, so yeah. Fix it.
Mr. Fire.
Do we need a statement in this RFP to set a time when the questions would be answered? And are they going to provide it to all? Applicants or proposals?
Should answers to any questions that come up?
Those are questions that are per request or request given to the request or not, not everybody, the way I interpret. If he has a question on.
Yeah, so you're saying that they have a question about the RFP. Should any answer be given to?
If it changes the RFP, it would.
Yeah. That's what I would mean is that if it, if it's something that.
Just clarification, you don't.
Yeah, if it came back, if somebody had a question, how does this work? And we realize something, it should have been spelled out, then yes. I don't know if we need to write that in here or just provide that should happen.
I'm gun shy because of the RFP I just wrote. I, if somebody said, you know, called you and had a question. You could answer it with specific to one person or use your discretion. I'm fine with that. Good catch on that paragraph. I scrolled right by it.
Yeah, I did think.
Yeah, the proper place at the bottom.
Anything else? Anyone see? Yeah, hate to be a pain in the butt, can they hand deliveries?
Ones as we see.
Yeah, and I think that's. Written proposals will be received at the Finance and Human Resources Department. Until five P M. April eleven point twenty three, and it gives, and in that part, I give the physical address.
Okay.
Yeah. In the bottom.
And it's.
You did.
It's in that statement as well.
You see, but at five P M. on South and blah blah blah.
We don't spell out mail. No, so maybe that's written proposals will be received. At the plant.
That's you don't need to, I don't think, right?
It should get here either way, but technically the field box would be the mailing address. So we need to separate that out.
Yeah, you don't want to confuse them with this addresses. Does it get here? It does, but three weeks later.
Yeah, so that's, so we just leave it. So then, then the change we need to make is at the bottom. I put the field box.
Right.
So I'll just change that to the physical.
Yeah.
Or or add it, either one.
Do you want to put on there clear on the literally mark? So then you can know what it is.
It's, yeah. Have to be. Shall be so indicated on the outside of the seal.
Looks good.
And if I may, yes. Want to talk about where this is going to be sent to, correct?
Yeah. But don't we have a RFP process that includes that, right? We have, we've discussed it enough.
You wanted to go to the Colorado Association of County.
County Attorney.
That needs, you need to.
Yeah, along with our standard. Media.
Those be the only ones. Is there anything else? Anybody else you can? Daily record.
What about, is there a way to disseminate that to other? Well, if you really want to put it out to the other counties through CCI or not, probably not.
No, it would, the only other thing you could do would be to send it to some like Pueblo.
I'd see three more in Pueblo, probably.
And Springs.
Chief, can anybody graduate or?
And whatever the Springs paper is.
We've got telegraph, I believe, yeah.
And they cover the local guys. Of course, you know, some of these county attorneys. Offices are in Drango and they represent counties in the northern part of the state.
Cause I send it out to.
I would think those three, the rest papers.
Good.
Been sending it to the radio.
Hey, you got it?
Okay.
You, I I've tried getting in contact with CCA.
Did you talk to, if might the contact, I gave you the present?
I, no, I can give him a call.
Oh, he's the guy. You got to get it to him, and he's expecting, and I've already told him that we'll be sending it, trying to disseminate.
I think perfect. I send that, and you know, so there. And then have not received anything. When I was asking for if they had any language like this, so.
Yeah, you you got that number. And he's the Will County Attorney, so you can.
Mine is.
Bruce Barker.
You're good. Are you good, sir? Okay. I have nothing else either, so. I would ask for public comment on it, but nobody could see that.
So I can, but there isn't any. There needs to be an amendment or changes we may have heard.
It's as corrected, so we correct it at real time, so.
I think as as corrected here now. Okay, so. I have an amend or. I have a motion on the floor to. Approve the RFP for the county attorney as corrected. And that will be going to the local media as well as three surrounding, and the. Power out of County Attorneys Association. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right.
That motion carries. Next item up on our agenda would be the consideration. Of the RFP for the CDOT side now construction. Mr. Flower.
Thank you, sir. Do both of you have an opportunity to look at that?
Yep.
Yes. I'm pulling my copy up right now. I click on the right. File. So we had voted at a commissioner meeting to authorize me to proceed with the. With the grant to support this along with an RFP. I did not receive the. You'll look at the next to the last state or the last sentence in that RFP. It says, statements to ensure non discrimination of disadvantaged. Business owners connected to CDOT assisted projects will appear. I have not received that. I talked to him Saturday night. And he said he would try to get that to me today or tomorrow. I told him it's kind of boilerplate language. I've looked up up some of that language, but. I told him I thought we could consider this without that language in there. So when I get that sentence or two. I will insert it instead of this asterisk statement. The highlight, obviously, the scope of work. Will include demolition, removal of the existing sidewalk, steps, handrails, curb and gutter, and some fill material. And then down there under preliminary and final designs, that's what they're. The RFPs are going to be geared towards. CDOT requires a three week posting of this RFP. And I accounted for that in the proposed dates. The paragraph on the second page speaks to that. That the sealed proposals be submitted to Custer County B O C C by five P M. On June fifth. Will be accepted by the administrative assistant or USPS. They want to hand deliver them or mail them. That's the only two ways they can submit. Been submitted after June fifth will not be considered. And then this speaks to what I had talked about in our workshop. All proposals will be considered on qualification based criteria with price negotiations occurring after a firm has been selected based. On the call that has been submitted. Price codes should not be submitted as price will not be considered in the selection criteria. We won't reject them if they do, but we won't consider the price. We're into CDOT standards. Sealed proposals will be open at the regular B O C C meeting June seventh. And a free proposal conference will be held April twenty fifth and ten noon. To allow interested parties to conduct an onsite evaluation of the project.
Where do you want them to meet you?
That's a great point. We probably should add that in here. Let me just do that real quick. Meeting site will be in the C C boardroom. Custer. County building. Thank God we don't have room numbers, right? We're not quite that big. So I had added, in general, the meeting site will be in the. B O C C boardroom in the Custer County building.
Or was that in?
I just, thank you.
The middle of the last paragraph.
After onsite evaluation of the project period. And then the meeting site will be in the B O C C boardroom. In the Custer County building. Questions pertaining to the project may be submitted. To myself, and answers will be provided to all interested parties. Any questions about that, gentlemen?
Do you need to put the address of the county building?
Two oh five South Sixth. It's in the.
It's on the paragraph.
Above.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wasn't sure.
That curiosity, why is it June fifth? How did that happen?
Um, we. We plugged in three week schedule for the posting and then backdated to whatever we thought was appropriate date to accept those.
It just seems like it's way out there, so questions.
Yeah, we have to have three weeks for them to.
I understand.
Post it, and then. I did not think this would go into the papers or be submitted to bid net. This week, so I allowed a week for that to be posted for next week.
Okay, so it's stretching a little bit. That doesn't matter.
It's going to take them a while to develop this. It's, they've got to go through all of these design things. So. And we're under their time. Crunch specifically. Matt thought we could probably still get. All the products from the firm that we select this year.
So some of that timeline, what does S U E stand for? You didn't define that.
Oh, there's two things in here. I meant to look up again.
Like site, something evaluation.
Yeah, site utility exploration.
That's what I thought.
And if you ask me about F O R review, I'd have to Google.
Same thing there. They probably need to be spelled out, but. That's going to take time. That's the wrench that'll get screw up. Timing is what they can coordinate that.
That. We wanted to allow ample time. We didn't want to. Have firms decide we wouldn't, no way we'd have time to do that and get it submitted. So, and I didn't think we were in any hurry anyway, so.
So F O R.
I'm looking here real quick.
Something review, something. Can't even think what that could be.
Sure, I've got it in my notes. No, Paul, these issues. Let's see here. We lost the file. That's very shattering here.
Right of white clearance.
That's R O W, yeah. E F O R review is something different.
Oh, E F O R?
Just, yeah, capital L, capital O, capital R. Something review.
I've lost my whole file.
Funding opportunities.
What's the R? Maybe that stands for review.
Migrated somewhere. All right, give me a sec. Okay. Not sure I spelled it out anywhere.
Ready, starting. R O W, you got the R O W there, right?
Yeah.
That must be formal operational. Wow, that that has to be a review.
He does vague on these. Abbreviation, that's for sure.
Finance Office Review.
There you go.
Final review conducted for all projects of the complete set of construction plans.
That's it.
Specs and the cost estimate to ensure completeness and accuracy.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. So they'll actually do this for us? Is that the deal?
Uh, yeah.
So there's a process that it, these guys, and so do they know where to send all this?
It all comes to us and then we.
We send it to them?
With CDOT, yeah.
To see the, okay.
Yep.
So that would be the team then.
And then. If this is approved, I will. If this is approved, I will send it back to CDOT for a final. They, technically, they have to approve it after we have presented, so this one will be killed. Next week, approved from CDOT, or at least next week, and then it won't get posted until I get that, uh, B D B statement. Or D B B statement, disband business. Shag shoe.
Not sure.
Were it capitalized or?
No.
Oh, yeah, I, I had it out and then I put it back in there, but, um. I may take that out again because we're trying to get away from that, so, good points, thank you ma'am, uh, Jennifer. Highlighted, let me get back to the document we were looking at here, um. In one description early in that RFP, I did insert the word courthouse and. It really doesn't need to be in there, so.
In the, on the second page.
Right. I will take that out.
This county courthouse bill.
Yeah, take out the word courthouse and just leave it as Custer County building. Cause the addresses. We'll get them here, thank you Jennifer, appreciate it. Just can.
And you know, they formerly known as Custer County as a courthouse in the first paragraph, first page.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I'll leave that in.
You got it down at the bottom of that paragraph, you got Custer County building.
Mm-hmm. Um, a lot of this was directed through CDOT, uh. I don't think we'll have any issues once we. Submitted to them.
Okay.
Other questions or concerns?
You understand the motion?
We did, didn't we?
No, I just.
Alright, I, I move that we, uh. Approved the request for proposal for the Custer County. What we call them is.
Well. County courthouse sidewalk project.
Yeah, that's what I proposed that we.
Okay, so I do have a motion on the floor to approve the RFP for the Custer County courthouse sidewalk project. Uh, as.
Discussed in a minute.
As amended here today. Any further discussion?
Yeah, the only thing I, it it's a little down the weeds, but, uh. This, it's part of the environmental, uh, slash clearances. I had indicated to CDOT that we would not be removing any of the mature trees out here in the front yard. Mostly that big tree. So. Uh, can't really talk about that, but. I don't think any of the flower beds will be disturbed, just, just that side.
Any further discussion? Since we're the only three on Zoom, I don't imagine we have anything online. So those in favor of approving the RFP for the Custer County. Courthouse sidewalk project. Signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, I will. Send that on. All I have to do is make sure he's okay with it.
Do we have any other additional items of business?
I would like to let you all know. That Robin has asked if I can attend and attending for the I O, which is a three-day training. And it starts on Wednesday. So, wanted to let you know that I will be in Pueblo Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. For that, and.
Of this week?
We don't have any meetings.
Forward all phones to you down there.
Nope. Um, but I will make sure that there's an office message. Just saying that I'm out. Anyway, and then they can call you direct on their side.
Right, and I'll be in here on Wednesday.
So.
So I may feel the caller through, but no promises.
Yeah.
I might let go of this. We'll see what, I generally reach around and pick it up with the rings when I'm in here, so. Thank you. Anything else?
I'm not seeing the.
Oh, yes, sir, I do, I just, um, sent, shared. I mean, it's really, if you guys don't mind, just looking over that real clear. This is the last one you sent for the professional service posting?
Yep.
Uh, we can still amend it, huh?
Yeah. And this is just a form on it.
Yeah, um. How about Custer County is seeking a licensed Colorado attorney? Serve as the account, as the county attorney? And I don't know about the remainder of twenty twenty-three.
Normally, it has normally been in contract, correct?
Yes.
Yearly contract.
I'm just worried somebody will look at that.
Oh, well, that's the only thing you're bidding on, it's, it's for, it's more than.
And I do have here that this contract is subject to renewal each year.
Yeah.
Do you want to move that up?
I know, I would just say it's, uh, we're looking for a county attorney, which will include for the remainder of this year. But starting. Mid-year or whatever.
And subject to renewal each year, so maybe move that up.
Yeah.
Including but not limited to.
Uh, I'd say, yeah.
To hire, no, just say it's, we're gonna want to hire a county attorney beginning whatever date. June, July.
Serve as a county.
Serve as a county attorney with contract to renew year.
Yes, who, yeah. Uh, then I'd put right after that sentence, the county attorney's contract. Is subject to renewal each year. Just move it up. Each county department.
To be, um.
Yeah.
Now, where are you, where are you saying we're gonna do it at a certain date?
You said that it should be received at the address below.
But you want to say we're seeking to hire an attorney effective. Next date, that's what we're looking for.
We didn't decide on a specific date.
That's what we're trying to do now.
For the RFP, so.
Yeah, we got.
The detailed RFP, I don't know if we need to. Spell it out here.
Well, you can, cause the guy may say, I was, I'd be available in November, is that when, you know?
But he's got the link on here to go to the detailed RFP. We can say, um.
Anticipated start date.
Or mid, mid-June or whatever.
With an anticipated start.
Yeah, you gotta have that in there so they.
Have some idea.
Some ideas so they've decided whether they're gonna go look for the RFP and waste their time on.
Something like that.
Hmm.
I like that.
Looks good.
And then, I would suggest where it says sealed proposals. Must be received at the address below by April eleven, I think it should. And this is going out to what?
This will go out to the papers, towns, uh, radio. CCA.
So this is the announcement of the request for RFP. You're not sending the RFP, they gotta come get it. Um. How about in that case, well, it does say Custer County, but in the headline, should it say Custer County Attorney Request for Reboot? Or Request for.
You do have to send this to.
For Custer County, Colorado.
So.
I don't know.
So where's this announcement going?
I just said the papers.
Yeah, it's gonna go to all of what we said before.
Yes.
Let's wanna make sure it goes.
Everybody who listens.
Yeah, alright.
Will you wait on me in case I go get my law degree?
Not already, the long you have it by April eleven.
You gotta go on a crash diet there and make it happen fast.
So Custer County Attorney.
I think so, yeah, because it's gonna go outside the county.
Yeah.
Good, I think.
Well, extra county, no, it's a Custer County Request for Proposals for County Attorney. Yes, as opposed to Custer County Attorney, it's not a.
For proposal for Custer County Attorney.
Right.
Either one.
Yeah, request. Yeah, request for proposals.
Custer County's attorney, it's Custer County Request for Proposal for County Attorney.
How does that look to you when he gets?
There you go, that's better.
Awesome. I like it when you do it, it's in purple.
Yeah. Okay, that's sweet.
Okay, yeah, hurry up and close it down before we could.
We're done.
Any, uh, any other? Business, any other comments?
Not for me.
Not for me.
I'd be in the case, this meeting has adjourned at three forty-one P M, just flipped on me here.
I'm gonna wait tomorrow, I get snowed on, feeding the horses.
Maybe.